Follow the meeting to order. Everyone rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Krab.
Here.
Mensah.
Here.
Voorhees.
Here.
Moving on to announcements, acknowledgements, and communications, and reports. Do we have any? Anyone else? Okay, moving on. I would entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda, please.
Motion to adopt agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
This is the section of the meeting for public participation. Everyone is welcome to come forward and say a few words. We just limit it to three minutes, and we only require that you state your name and your address.
Good evening. Richie Stevenson, 69 Bain Street. I'd like to congratulate each and every one of you as you embark on the new journey that the Lord has put you on. And also, not to separate any of you, but to Rashida Hammond, the first African-American female on the council for the city of Mount Clemens, I commend you. And as I tell everybody, we have power in three places: prayer, our voice, and our vote. And it's imperative for the citizens to come forth with their concerns, their issues. These people sitting up here don't know what it is that we need, what we ask for, or even what our wishes are unless we voice them. We have power in our voice. So on that note, congratulations, and as you start on this, as all of you embark on this new journey together, I'll have you in my prayers.
Thank you.
Gloria Haller, 260 Cass. I have a number of topics, but I'm gonna start with the most important and probably stay with it tonight. Above all other concerns and needs the city has, number one is a cash flow and money. I don't want to hear anything about anything else until you get your money straight. And there's a real easy way to do it, and I don't want it down-sold to the population the way it has been by prior commission. As I'm aware that everyone on this commission is gonna be in a worse shape if there's a city income tax and they are facing it with their roof. But since the roof tax is a horrendous burden on the low and fixed-income people, who would if you went to a city income tax with a rollback of that roof tax increase? Most of the people that are paying something won't pay anything because they won't have a roof tax anymore, any income tax they'll be exempt from. If you want the details on it, talk to me, I'll tell you about it. And so can other members, Mr. Voorhees and Ms. Fournier can both explain it to you. And once you get a city income tax, that's your short-term cash flow. Use some of that money to put in a bath house. I don't want to hear anything about this downtown development. It'll develop itself if you give it a good start and quit doing things backwards. Put in a bath house. We live on a 300-year supply of minerals that are every bit as strong as they were back in 1895, and you do have technology now to take care of the smell, so let's not get stupid about it. Put in a bath house. Go to your public baths and mineral baths as an alternative medical treatment. And when the people begin coming for them, let them determine what you need in your downtown. Your downtown will develop itself, and that will be your long-term sustained income. Please, get it straight. And explain to people that an income tax is not gonna kill them. In fact, it'll save most of them that right now are dying with property taxes.
Thank you. Next.
Hi. Sean Yarrow, 19 Hubbard Street. I was here last week and brought up the issue of delinquent taxes in the city of Mount Clemens and the residents. I think my findings showed 18.7 percent of the population of homeowners are delinquent in their taxes. And in the October meeting, it was stated that they will remind them that they are delinquent. We don't need a reminder, we already know. So I have a proposal that I would like the commission to consider. One, I know that there's a lot of information available and help available through the Michigan and Macomb Treasurer's Office. That information is difficult to navigate, especially for 3 percent of our population who doesn't speak English or are not internet savvy. We need to remember that 25 percent of the population is lower income under the poverty line. So I propose that some information be sent to the delinquent property owners, all the information, so that they have knowledge on how to get it deferred, get on payment programs, whatever is available. And I'd also like to see, and I will volunteer, and I do have other volunteers, if we could make some kind of event, maybe at the library where there's computer and internet access, to invite those taxpayers who are delinquent to the event and have people help them navigate the website, the language, and whatnot, so that they can get on a payment plan at least for 2017 before their house is going to foreclosure in March. I don't believe foreclosure is the answer into balancing a budget. And that's what I propose. I will help them, I will bring other teachers forth to help them. We can invite them in, sit down with them, go through the websites, go through all the information, bring an interpreter in if they don't speak English. And at least we know we've done everything we can to keep people in their homes. I would like the commission to consider that, maybe using the library or another public place, and sending out a notice to these people, because they generally need help. I have two master's degrees, and I had a difficult time navigating the sites. So I'm assuming that other people are having anxiety issues. Thank you.
Ms. Yarrow, can you give me your address again? I just didn't catch it, I'm sorry.
19 Hubbard.
Hubbard, thank you. Anyone else?
Lynda Kuretolo, 29 Kendrick. My comment is about the contract that you're considering with the engineering company about the water treatment plant. And I just wanna make sure that you are going to include the concern about the PFAS family of chemicals. And I know Denise, I mean Commissioner Mensah, has been educating herself on it, so she knows what a lot of us citizens are concerned about. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mickey Weiss, 18-200 Terra Drive, Clinton Township. I just want to remind the community about the Christie's Open House this Friday from 5:00 to 9:00. Santa passes will be given out at the fountain stage starting at 5:00. The Montessori Academy Choir will be entertaining at 5:00 to 5:30. Santa will arrive at 6:00. Pictures with Santa will start at 6:30 until 9:00 at Pop's Sweets and Treats at 90 Macomb Place. The Children's Hands-on Museum will be open that evening with arts and crafts for the kids, as well as hot chocolate, coffee, popcorn. And we will continue to have the wagonette rides through the downtown for free for the families that are coming down. Businesses will be open till 9:00 with refreshment sales, and some will have raffles in their stores. On Saturday is our Mount Clemens Santa Parade. It starts at 10:00. Please come down, and we have 135 units this year. We're very excited. We have some new floats and bands, so please take time and come down. After the parade, there's a reception at Oakland University for the food collection that they've been doing. Santa and Mrs. Claus and the live reindeer will be down there as well. After that, the Emerald Theater is going to be showing the Polar Express movie for the children. It's free for kids, and adults, there's a small fee for. They will open the doors at 1:00, and the movie will start at 2:00. And we're hopeful that we'll have Santa and Mrs. Claus take a stroll down to the theater as well. For the first 200 children, we have the Polar Express Believe Bells for them that we will be giving away at the door. Also want to remind everyone that on November 30th is Small Business Saturday. Please join and help our small businesses thrive. When you're supporting a small business, you're supporting a dream. One small purchase can make a big difference. And if you didn't know this, every dollar you spend locally returns three times to our community in keeping the money here instead of elsewhere. So please come down and shop small with us. We will have raffles, and I will be the silent shopper, walking around giving out free gift certificates and gift cards to the shoppers that day. So please come into the downtown and enjoy all the events that we have for the next few days. Thank you.
Hi. Gina New, 51 North Island. Just wanted to let everyone know that Neighbors Helping Neighbors, we're starting our winter projects, and we are accepting neighbor nominations for any neighbors you might know of that are elderly or disabled that might need help clearing their snow. We have volunteers, we're looking to match with other people to sort of adopt a neighbor, if you will. So we have a lot of people that are ready to go and willing to help, but we're looking for nominations, people who could use a hand. And you can find us on Facebook at Mount Clemens Neighbors Helping Neighbors.
Good evening, Commissioner. I am Thomas Barnes. I live at 291 Jones Street, Mount Clemens, Michigan. What I want to talk about is a very sensitive subject and a very sensitive topic, so please bear with me. After the passing of William Sonny Ford, it has left a vacancy on this commission. As a kid growing up here in Mount Clemens, one of the things that I felt as a child was disenfranchised, because we felt like there were people from our community that didn't speak for our community. In the time that I got to know Mr. Ford over the last year, I felt like Sonny Ford did that for us. Sonny stood up to the commission on issues that affected our community. He fought for the people on the northeast end of town. Mr. Ford was a voice for those who felt like they were voiceless. I really want the commission to consider, in your appointment of the person who will replace Mr. Ford, a decision that, of someone who will share the same goals and the same frame of mind that Mr. Ford had, and his love for the northeast end of our city. This portion of the city is disproportionately poor. We have a drug treatment facility in the middle of our community. We have an underfunded community center in the middle of our community, and tons of HUD housing and subsidized housing in our community. The children of our community feel voiceless. So I would ask the commission to, when choosing a replacement for Mr. Ford, you choose somebody that shares his goals and his value system and what he believed in for the city of Mount Clemens. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening and welcome to the new mayor, the new commissioners, and we got Mr. Campbell back again, and you're back. Welcome to everybody. I know this commission is starting out new and fresh, but I have a couple opinions, and I'm not gonna mention them all, but one thing is, I've asked this commission questions seven years ago and still haven't gotten answers.
Dolores, I don't think you mentioned your name and your address.
I'm sorry. I thought you knew me by now. Dolores Gassiniak, 250 Euclid.
Thank you.
Like I said, I've asked questions in seven years, I'm still waiting, and they weren't hard questions. They were like, I had a dog complaint, I never got an answer for that. I had issues about the street cleaning. Instead of getting an answer from the commission, I get recommended, how do you say, recommended on Facebook, which was not a Facebook issue. So I know this commission will answer people's questions, and I know I'm not the only one here who has not been answered their questions in the past seven or 10 years. And good luck, and thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will close public participation and move along to number seven, Administrative Responses to Issues or Questions Raised During the Previous Meetings. None tonight, okay. I need an approval of the minutes, please.
Motion to approve the minutes of the City Commission Session of November 4th and the City Organizational Meeting of November 12th.
Support.
Roll call? Oh, sorry, discussion? Roll call, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number 9A, the Second Public Hearing on Special Assessment for Downtown Maintenance Program. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion to open.
Sorry, motion. Motion to open the Second Public Hearing on Special Assessment for Downtown Maintenance.
Support.
The date has been set for the Second Public Hearing for the Downtown Maintenance Program. The purpose of the Second Public Hearing is to review and confirm the special assessment role as prepared by the city assessor.
Do we have any discussion?
I have one comment slash question. The recent snow, I mean, it did take us all by surprise, but the way that the sidewalks were cleared downtown, if you parked in one of the spots, like in front of Bass City, you couldn't get to the cleared part of the sidewalk without walking through all the snow. And for some of us, that's just a matter of getting our feet wet. For others that are handicapped, it's a whole different thing. And you cannot push a walker through frozen snow. And the way a lot of our handicapped spots are set up in the city require that the handicapped person has to go around. There's not, the curb to sidewalk is not lowered at the spots themselves. So I would request, I don't know if it's part of this downtown assessment, or if it's part of the city, but we need to keep the whole sidewalk clear.
This isn't, the snow is not included in the special assessment, correct?
Well, yeah, not really, no. There is a portion of it that is part of the special assessment, and it does cover the expense of the salt that is used on those sidewalks, so yes. Your comments are noted, Commissioner.
During the public hearing, we can hear from the public, correct? On this issue. So if you have any questions about this issue in particular, about the special assessment for the Downtown Maintenance Program, this is the opportunity for the public to speak on that issue. Does anyone have any questions on that? Seeing no further discussion, we can close, if we have a motion to close the Second Public Hearing?
I'll move that we close the discussion on the public hearing for the special assessment of Downtown Maintenance.
Support.
We need to, we need to.
Commissioner Voorhees, if you could, there is, that motion to close the Second Public Hearing also confirms the special assessment role.
Yes. We can add that confirms the special assessment role number 20-01.
Thank you. Do we have a second? I'm sorry.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Agenda Item Number 9B, Request for Approval to Enter into a Contract Between the City of Mount Clemens and Fishbeck Thompson Carr &amp; Huber for the Engineering Study of the Water Filtration Plant.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would, the recommended motion, I would ask that it be amended to add the following: To Award an Engineering Services Contract Approved by the City Attorney's Office. Just add "approved by the City Attorney's Office," because we don't have a contract at this point. It's an RFP. They have been deemed the best candidate, but you then do a contract in line with that RFP, and we haven't done that at this point.
All right. Motion to award the Engineering Services Contract Approved by the City Attorney's Office between the City of Mount Clemens and Fishbeck Thompson Carr &amp; Huber for engineering, an engineering study of the water treatment plant, and authorize city staff to execute the contract.
Support.
Recently, the city sent out a request for proposals qualifications to provide an engineering study of the city of Mount Clemens Water Filtration Plant. Three proposals were received, and city staff, along with their current engineering firm staff, Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick reviewed the proposals and conducted interviews of all three firms. The firms were as follows: Fishbeck Thompson Carr &amp; Huber, Tetra Tech, and Jones &amp; Henry Engineers. As a result of the interviews conducted, city staff is recommending that the city award a contract to Fishbeck Thompson Carr &amp; Huber, who will work diligently on this project at an hourly rate with a not-to-exceed cost of $124,800. The expected results of this study will result in a comprehensive list and cost estimate of upgrades needed at the water filtration plant to maintain compliance with the Department of Environmental, Great Lakes, and Energy. This study will also provide recommendations on how to move forward systematically with best practices and updates to ensure quality drinking water is produced for our residents.
Do we have discussion? Commissioner Mensah.
So this is for improving the plant, not actually the testing of the water. But if we improve the plant, then our water quality, you know, will certainly be affected. I just wanted to say to Lenny Bertrand and Jason Pick, the memo that we have is very thorough, and I want to thank you guys for, you know, putting this together, putting the RFP, RFQ together, and, you know, this is very timely with all of the information that's been out, you know, on the press on water drinking quality in all cities of this area of Macomb County. So thank you guys for doing this, and I look forward to seeing the results of this study.
From what I can tell, the only question I have, this is also for all capital improvements, right, in terms of what we really need to do to move the water filtration plant to the next, to the current times, right? To modernize it?
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Agenda Item Number 9C, Discussion of City Commission Vacancy.
Motion to discuss the guidelines for filling the city commission vacancy.
At this time, it would be appropriate for the city commission to discuss filling the vacancy which occurred with the passing of Commissioner Bill Ford on September 6, 2019. In accordance with the City Charter 10.109-Sec. 73, any vacancy which occurs in the commission shall be filled by a majority vote of the remaining members of the commission. The appointed commissioner will hold office for any balance of the unexpired original term of the vacancy. Commissioner Ford's term will expire in November of 2021. If the vacancy in the office of Commissioner is not filled within 60 days, the vacancy shall be filled for the respective unexpired term at a special election. Attached is a notice of city commission vacancy, as well as a suggested timeline.
Okay. Discussion? Do we want to read the timeline?
The timeline that.
So that everyone can.
The suggested timeline is, it's discussion this evening, the November 18th meeting. Beginning tomorrow, if the commission accepts that, we will accept letters of application from residents. They will turn in an application to the city clerk's office beginning tomorrow, all the way through December 2nd, which is a Monday, during normal business hours. We're open from 8:00 until 4:30. We would ask that any applicants attend the city commission meeting of Monday, December 2nd, to introduce themselves during public participation, so that people know who it is interested in the position, and the commissioners as well, so they can put a name to a face. And then we would schedule interviews with the city commission the week of December 9th. It should only be one evening, but whenever the majority of the commission are available to do those interviews, would be, that date would be made. And then the commission would vote on appointing one of those candidates at the second meeting in December, which is on Monday, December 16th. This is all in a timeframe that the city does need to follow, which is according to the city charter. They have 60 days to make that appointment, and if they do not do so within 60 days, it would need to go to a special election. So they should give the city commission time to accept applications, meet those people, interview, and then make a decision. If a decision is not made December 16th, there is one more meeting to try again, and then before it would have to go to an election. This is the same process and the same procedure that was followed the last time. We fill the vacancy the same way.
Then you want to have any questions? Or comments?
Let's rock and roll.
Did you want to?
Is that the recommendation? I think we can get that in the form of a motion or something.
Yep.
That we can follow this?
Yep. Somebody would like, somebody would like to make a motion to follow this timeline and follow this procedure for the staff.
I motion that we follow the timeline and procedure as presented for filling the vacancy.
Support.
Discussion? Roll call.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Most definitely.
Agenda Item Number 9D, Approval of Purchases and Payments of Invoices.
Motion to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Do we have any items on the consent agenda?
No.
No consent agenda tonight. Moving on to number 11, City Manager's Report.
A reminder that city offices will be closed on Thursday, November 28th, and Friday, November 29th, for the Thanksgiving holiday. Thursday's refuse pickup will be delayed until Friday, and Friday's refuse pickup will be delayed until Saturday. Please consider shopping and supporting the downtown businesses on Saturday, November 30th, 2019, for Small Business Saturday, as well as throughout the holiday season. The Downtown Development Authority has begun its Free After 3 Parking Program that will allow visitors to park at no cost after 3:00 PM during the week. Parking is always free on Saturdays and Sundays. The city of Mount Clemens will once again present the 44th Annual Macomb County Santa Parade on Saturday, November 23rd. The parade will begin at 10:00 AM and will take place on Main Street between Church and Clinton Streets. Clinton Streets. The tinsel tour kickoff will be held on Tuesday, December 3rd, from 5:00 PM until 8:00 PM at City Hall. Stroll through this spectacular array of decorated Christmas trees, visit with Santa and enjoy a cup of hot chocolate. Trees will be on display from December 3rd through January 1st. Anyone interested in participating by sponsoring and decorating a Christmas tree can contact city manager's office at 586-469-6818, extension 315, to reserve their tree. The curbside compost pickup season is scheduled to end on Friday, December 6th, 2019, and nominations are now being accepted for the local treasure award. Nomination forms are available at City Hall and the city manager's office and on the city's website at www.cityofmountclemens.com. The deadline to submit nominations is Monday, December 16th, 2019.
Thank you. We will move on to commissioners' comments and we will start with newly elected Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Mayor Krab. First, I would like to thank the city administration for their time and understanding as we start our new position. Lisa and Jeff, thank you for spending two and a half hours with both Commissioner Hammond and myself to bring us up to speed on what the city is working on. I wish to thank my wife Monica and my daughters Allison and Erin for their understanding during the campaign. Sometimes Dad was a little testy. To the voters and citizens of Mount Clemens, thank you for your trust. When we took the oath of office, I promised to perform the duties of the office of city commissioner to the best of my ability. And that I will do. So help me God. I love Mount Clemens and with that, once a Clement, always a Clement. Thank you.
Commissioner Mensah?
I don't know how many of you remember Polywood Pets. They were in the Gibraltar Trade Center. They were shut down because they were selling pets that were ill. And it was a group called Puppy Mill Awareness that really brought that forward. Well, you know, after they were shut down, they reopened. They reopened on southbound grass that right about Harrington and a new name called Little Dogs. Well, they have been shut down again and this time it is permanent. They were shut down last week, Wednesday, for again, selling dogs that were ill. And because this is their second go-around, they said that they can't afford to pay the damages to the people who bought the sick dogs from them and that they can't afford to pay the lawyer fees. So they will not be opening again in Mount Clemens, which I am very happy about. And I just wanted to remind you that if you are going to get a puppy or a kitty or something like that, there are plenty available for adoption from the Humane Society and from the Macomb County Animal Control. So I think we should all be happy that Polywood slash Little Dogs will be no more in our city. I wanted to just give a shout out to the battling bather's again. WDIV Channel 4, they have what they call the fan, the Fall Fan Choice Awards. And our Sam Joseph from Mount Clemens High School got two awards. He was voted the fan favorite football offensive tackle and the fan favorite football offensive guard. Sam's also a member of the Mount Clemens Optimist Club, the junior optimist club that is formed at the high school. They are doing a lot of really great things. There are good things happening in our school. Gina New spoke earlier about Neighbors Helping Neighbors. We did our seventh cleanup November 10th. I wanted to remind people, there's a lot of talk about the blight in the neighborhoods and some of that blight is seniors or handicapped people that just simply aren't able to do this work anymore. So a group like this that Gina coordinates makes a difference in the neighborhood. And if you have any desire to help your neighbors, I shovel some, two always, sometimes four houses on my street. We can all help our neighbors out. There are a lot of people that could just simply use the assistance. And I wanted to say hello to Brandon Bowman. He's our, Mount Clemens Public Library Director. He's sitting way back there. I think the library is doing wonderful things. They have some great programs for kids. They have some great programs for adults, the music programs and things. They have a class coming up on finances and stock that I'm probably going to take. But I just wanted to say thank you for all of the great work that you are doing for the residents of Mount Clemens at the public library. Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell?
I want to say welcome to Commissioner Hammond and Commissioner Voorhees. And to everybody in the audience, there was a lot of people here tonight, including one of them, a former commissioner, Mr. John, so it was great seeing him. I look forward to working and that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Hammond?
I want to thank everyone that voted and I'm honored to be elected as Mount Clemens City Commissioner and I will continue to do all I can to help move the city of Mount Clemens forward. Thank you.
And Commissioner Fournier?
Yes, congratulations to all of you. I'm looking forward to working with you as well. And I also wanted to recognize Gina. I, I think what you're doing is, is a great program because it hopefully can reach some of those people that don't have neighbors that help. Because I know in our neighborhood, we're pretty good at watching out for each other, but unfortunately, there are some that don't get that help. And God bless you for doing this and sticking to it. It's, it takes a lot and I, I do appreciate it. And with that, I just want to wish everyone a wonderful Thanksgiving. I am very grateful for everyone here. I'm grateful to live in this city. I am grateful for all my great neighbors and for all the people, all the things that are going on here that are positive. So thank you very much and if you're traveling, be safe. I hope you all enjoy everything that's going on downtown this next week.
I would like to take a second to thank everyone who came out to the polls. It was a, it was a great turnout for our local election. It was significantly more than the last election and so I thank you all for participating and for, for the election in general. I guess the results were, it was, it was a thrilling night, to say the least, and, and then the morning of the realization that the work begins. So thank you to everybody who really reached out and I was inundated with calls and texts and messages and that was an incredible feeling and thank you to everybody who did that. I felt welcomed to the new role and that was, that was really exciting. I'm excited to work with this team. They are incredible and I believe that working, all of us working together, we're going to, we're going to be able to move things forward and, and that's very exciting. I am going to be continuing coffee talks. They won't be commissioner coffee talks, I guess. They'll be coffee talks with the mayor and the commissioners, so whoever wants to join me, I'd love for them to do that. We'll do coffee talks. This next upcoming one will be Tuesday, December 10th at 9:30 in the morning. Thursday, December 12th at 6:30 PM. So we'll do a morning and an evening so that we can hopefully get everybody's schedule. And those are at John's Family Grill. Just come over and have a cup of coffee and talk about some of the things that are happening in, happening in Mount Clemens. You'll notice that I try to keep them on the second Tuesday and the second Thursday. The second Tuesday is usually the morning, second Thursday is usually the evening. That way everybody can kind of keep it straight. And you may notice that around town and here at City Hall, there will be collection boxes for the Oakland University, Mount, downtown Mount Clemens, I'm sorry, Oakland University and City of Mount Clemens Food Bank that we're trying to, sorry, food collection. I'm sorry, my brain is, we're having a food collection to help the Macomb County Food Bank, correct? Food Bank, thank you. Keep it all straight. So if you have non-perishable goods that you can donate, you can, usually any of the downtown businesses are collecting, have boxes to put stuff in, but also here at City Hall. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Nope. Do you have a change? Or can we just change? People can speak at the end?
Not until the next meeting. We have to, we have to adopt that resolution.
So the, the second meeting is...
Second meeting.
Right, right, right. Yep.
With that, I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Adjourn. Thank you.